For the public's information, the board will have an executive session with our solicitor to discuss legal matters at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Just some ground rules, we welcome call of comment. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the front of the room, there's a podium right in front to address the board as a whole. If there is a non-agenda item that you would like to address the board, that is taken at the end of our agenda meetings, please be very respectful and kind to thank you for coming this evening. What we have tonight, we have a presentation of commendation for an Eagle Scout, Alexander Giblick, and he is accompanied by his two parents, Thea and Andre. Welcome. So I just want to know how thrilled I was to be a part of Alexander's Eagle Scout Port of Honor Ceremony, and I have a look, we attended that at the Brennafin Scout Troop 97, the building. And on Sunday, March 2nd, but we could not honor Alexander because he is on the Lowmore High School swim team. And we went to one, in 2024, he went to the district, and then this year he went to the state, right?
I went both districts and the state.
Both of them. That's amazing. And I learned that Alexander from attending the afternoon work here, that you were one of the youngest in sophomore at Lowmore High School, one of the youngest students that received this Eagle Scout Honor, and you can see from all his badges. He, you know, he's accomplished quite a lot in a short time, and your Eagle Scout project consisted of building a bird blind at the Churchville Nature Center. So, and in addition to your scouts' honors and achievements, besides being on the swim team, you're on the debate club. And you helped with organizing the NITAN, their parade event, and you're on the high school media club, to the part of the tech crew, and the school news. And also this summer, very exciting, that your mom should go and crown you, right? That you're going to attend, defend a pre-medical mentorship program at Yale University. So we're really proud of all your accomplishments, and we all want to present you with this commendation tonight, which is, we don't think you'd laugh lightly. But you, you have done so many great things, and we wish you good luck as you, you know, remain at the high school this year, and the other two years, and it seems like you're double placing. You have a lot of goals set, so it's a resolution, the board of commissioners, a Lowmore Township, whereas Alexander Giblick completed the extensive requirements to attain the status of Eagle Scout, the highest advancement rank in Boy Scouting in December 2024, and whereas Alexander Eagle Scout project consisted of building a bird blind at Churchville Nature Center. We're going to go and check that out too, in something to me. You did it in two days, right? You built it in two days?
One or two weeks.
So, and a bird line is like a concealed structure that allows bird watchers and photographers to observe birds without disturbing nature. It's often camouflaged and strategically placed near feeding areas. Those blinds enhance wildlife, you'll not remove. And after extensive research, Alexander thought that bird line would be a good addition to the park where the visitors could stop, rest, and enjoy watching the birds. So with the help of his fellow Boy Scout members, the scoutmaster, the assistant scoutmaster and his parents, Alexander completed this project over two days in May of 2024. So whereas in addition to his Boy Scout honors and achievements, Alexander, the sophomore at Lowmore High School, is a member of high school swim team, where he participated in district and state championships in 2024 and 2025. In addition to swimming, participate in the May Club, we spoke about, the organization of NITAN, the media club, and as part of the tech crew for the school news. This summer, he plans to attend a 10-day pre-medical mentorship program at Yale University. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, anyone watch over the meeting? Hello? Okay. The first agenda that we covered is my agenda as Chair of Internal Affairs Committee, is review and consider minutes of March 11th, 2025. Board, any questions or comments? We have Commissioner Halden too, also in addition online, we want to say hi Ruth.
Hello.
Oh, and any questions or comments, Ruth?
No.
Okay. Any public comments regarding the minutes? Motion to approve the March 11th, 2025 minutes.
Thank you very much.
Motion been moved and seconded to approve the March 11th, 2025 minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we have all ayes. Thank you, commissioners. Motion's passed. Next is review and consider the April 2025 bill list. Board, do you have any questions or comments regarding the bill list? Okay. None. Any public comment at this time? None. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the April 2025 bill list. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all ayes. Motion passed. Next is our administrative report. Manager Hartman.
Thank you. Just a few items to report on this evening. The first is that I wanted to call out, actually in our next two meetings, a major item related to the new construction of the fire rescue station will get underway. So next month, we will have our bond council and bond underwriter here to introduce a bond parameters ordinance. If that all ends up working agreeable to the board, we will ask the May to be able to advertise that ordinance and then bring that back in June. What that ordinance will do is then authorize your underwriter to be able to go into the market and pick a date in July, or we will sell the first $10 million of general obligation bonds towards that construction project. That dollar value generally was picked to be able to reimburse property acquisition costs, as well as begin funding the soft costs for building out the consulting team and the proposals for those, which I've been reporting on in recent months. And then also have the initial seed money pool when we get to construction, hopefully aiming for the 21st. So I just wanted everybody to be aware that that will be a big item coming up in the next couple of months. Separate of that major project, we've got several grant projects that are kind of on the verge of getting underway. There's a later agenda item this evening related to the intersection improvements that fill on Red Line. Last month, the board authorized advertising the bidding process for the two signal upgrades on both roads, and that one is funded by a Marley grant. We have a planning meeting scheduled for this coming Friday, where we will be talking about the Viber Road sidewalk that's funded by a line company, and ABC and TDF grant. Also at that meeting, we'll be talking about the streets give design for that there's quarter pipe. That is a local share account funded grant for the preliminary design for that project. There's also the EDP 902 grant that is funding the swap loader for Public Works. And we also have the funding for the floodgates which Public Works will be able to purchase and then install after we have an open trailer. So all of those things are in term account. And then also in the grant, I just wanted to update the board that on April 2nd, Ratu was able to submit the DCMR C2 P2 grant, which is seeking funds for the park building at Bollomorland, as well as a couple of additional amenities to lay around there. We're hoping that we would have like a September announcement on that grant, so we will stay in touch about that one, and then have some final decisions to make. And any authorizations related to him, the funding, anything of that nature would all come following the grant announcement, hopefully within the fall. So those are the things that I wanted to update the board on this evening, unless there are any other questions.
Thank you very much for having me. Is the board of any questions for Manager Hartman? Okay, I accept your report as submitted. Is the tax collector's report?
Does the public have any questions for Mr. Hartman?
Do they? Yes, I have my hand up.
Okay, you can come up for a public comment.
Yeah, Ruth, Chris, do you have an update on the land bid for AMC? No, no update at all. So what do you think will happen by July, when we build the mortgage bond with $70,000 with the reconstruction of the firehouse, I mean the new firehouse?
So we're working on those things concurrently, but I should have any answer from AMC, but based on what they're trying to offer within the next, hopefully a couple of it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, next is our tax collectors' report. Who's Jane online?
I think she's talking to somebody.
She's the other one.
Okay.
People are here paying taxes.
They are.
Sorry, I have, I have people at the window.
Okay.
The tax. The taxes.
Go ahead.
Okay. The taxes are collected in the face amount of 25%. Actual collection is at 24%. The outstanding balance is about $4 million, which probably close to 3 million came in this week from the mortgage companies and everyone coming in to pay. The discount due date is this Friday, April the 11th. The tax office will be open from 9:00 in the morning till 4:30 in the afternoon. If anyone has not received their tax bill or has any questions, or if you know anyone that needs that information, please ask them to give the office a call. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions for tax collector sale? Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Our, our separate report is submitted. Next is my liaison report. My liaison positions are Lowmore Township School District, Lowmore Township DEI, which is now Excellence in Educational Equity Committee, along Lowmore Township Community Events. So I'll start off with the Lowmore Township District Excellence in Education Committee. We met on Monday, March 24th, together as a group, and we are collaboratively working on reviewing and selecting content that will be part of the school district strategic planning process.
Right.
And document, of course, has to be approved by the school. And it's a part of the policies, the district's policies and procedures. Our next meeting will take place on May 5th, 2025. It's usually a two-hour meeting. And we're really enjoying it. Next, Lowmore Township School District School Board, and the school board had their work session meeting, they have a work session meeting tonight. I sent the board, it's a budget update, it's on the agenda for tonight, and I'll give a report in our next meeting. Prior to that, I attended the public meeting of the school board on Zoom, and that was on March 18th. So just some highlights that I'd also forward to the board is, the district had a presentation of a direct comprehensive educational plan. So it was really interesting for all of us to take a look, and also reviewed our master capital projects budget, it's for repairs and maintenance. And they also included the price or design plan for Murray Avenue Stadium. So if anyone would like to take a deeper dive, you can look at www.lntsd.org. Just two other things for the school district that I think is really important, and I think all, you know, mark your calendars for the Out of Darkness, American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, going to take place May 3rd. And registrations, 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM, Walker. Steve and I actually saw this. One other thing was, the students at the high school, there were four students named the Penda Regional Innovation Challenge winners. So it was, that's a really nice project, and not many students in schools are selected. It's a part of Governor Shapiro's goal of growing Pennsylvania's state workforce, and introducing students to real issues being addressed at the department, and giving them an opportunity to explore like some career state government, you know, positions and, you know, really work together as a team. So those four students, very proud of them. Next is Lowmore Township Community Events, March, I didn't really elaborate last month, we'll get the Martin Luther King Day of Service, and the event was rescheduled several times due to weather. It was a bright sunny day, and we, Steve and his grandson S.J., collected truckloads of trash that were collected. So that's in coordination with Principal Miles, who is at Lowmore Township High School, and we really enjoyed that, that day. We cleaned up a lot of litter. Next in April, we, just this Sunday, we had the township sponsored egg comp. It was run by the Lanes Valley Library, and, and it was in Lowmore Park. It was chilly, but a lot of families came out to enjoy this day, and their kids and families had a blast. So we had wonderful, about 20 student volunteers, library staff, Vanessa Beth Pan, and I think you two commissioners that did come to the event. And special thanks to the public works department for the hard work, sectioning off the age groups and setting off and breaking down. Next, Steve and I just spoke, the public works picked up their bear, the bear root trees today, that will be planted this week for our spring tree planting. And upcoming, we have our Earth Day event, and we're having two events. One will take place on Tuesday, April 2nd, on Earth Day from 3:00 to 4:30. The township is working on pollinator garden at the Lowmore Park, it's the Weecheep side of the park. This was recommended and asked for by residents of Ward 6, they wanted something kinetic, what Addington Township has, there's about two of those nature pollinator gardens, and people seem to love them, so we're responsive to that, and we're also, we're also putting your drainage sort of help with stormwater management in that park and in that area. And from 4:30 to 6:30 is our official Earth Day event at the park. We has already been advertising the event, and we'll have Earth Day guys, you know, some tables and activities for kids and families. We have our Pinewood 2nd grade township, and Lowmore Police Department tour, that will take place on two mornings, Thursday, April 24th and Friday, April 25th, and we'll look forward to spending some time with the kids, both of those mornings. And finally, we have Ridge Week Park, our playground, our official opening, and that will take place Friday, April 25th at 6:30. So, does any of the commissioners have any question? Hang on for the follow. If not, I think those are my agenda items for this evening. Next, the chair recognizes Dennis Mueller, Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, President Curtis. I have a short agenda tonight. First item on my agenda is the building official report, running enforcement to, with the CBI.
Hello. We had a bunch of office meetings, we had staff meetings, we had a PMBOK class, the Giants, we were a row. There was a PAZO meeting, which is the zoning officers here. We had Montgomery County Planning Commission come in and talk to us about what's happening in Montgomery County with their housing in different ways that, you know, we could help people in the township. We had a bunch of site meetings, and we're getting busy with building permits for decks and all that fun stuff.
Thank you. Any questions, board? I think that is enough. I saw her shaking her hand.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a little trouble hearing, so did you ask if I had questions?
Correct.
Um, well, I think that I'm going to be talking to them when we get to the zoning hearing board, okay, about one of the applications, so not right now.
The next item on my, the next item on my agenda is my liaison report, and on March 20th, I attended quarterly meeting for petty pack next technological restoration with talking across. The quarterly medium, most significant in this quarter's update was the upcoming strategic plan that they are taking. The exercise will take place in Q3 of this year, where they're looking at some long-term strategic goals on how they can better utilize the land, land acquisitions, and other, you know, potential growth of the, of the trust. They're wrapping up the acquisition of the campground, which they're cleaning up and putting some more sign jobs and crosswalks to allow visitors to be able to safely cross that section, that edge over there, that section of that over. So that was pretty much the updates. The next meeting will be until June, so I'll update you at that time. That concludes my agenda items. As a fact.
Thank you, Commissioner Mueller. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Pace, Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Thanks, President. I'll make review and consider 2025 paving bids. March 26th, we put out the bid for the paving project with a base bid and an alternate. We received two prices, one from RC, one from Glasgow. And I'm going to give the curse of God to you, the U of U, or the team, and liquid fuels have received versus overall costs.
Sure. So ultimately, we're recommending that the board award the base bid, and we have the streets listed there, Barry Lane, Betsy Road, Bonnington, Heather Road, Peasant Drive, Blackberry Drive, Woodward Drive, Black Road, and Niddle Drive. And then alternate one being Harrison Avenue, Wincup Avenue, and Mary Avenue from Red Lion to Lion Pike Town. The paving projects are funded entirely by the state agency, so there's no allocation, so that's your Highway 8 fund, 135 in your budget. We typically had a target before of $300,000 of fund balance, so essentially anything that we would receive from the state, subtract that, plus the fund balance, back down to $300,000, that would be the scope of the project. For 2024, staff recommended and the board accepted reducing that fund balance target down to $175,000. And our premise for that was that we were holding those funds in the, kind of god forbid instance of needing to manage like an immediate road closure or a bridge issue. With having received the private developer funds that go into your capital improvement traffic safety fund, we didn't think that holding funds there was as necessary, and that the bigger thing that we could accomplish, paving more roads. So the target for 2025 was to be at $175,000 at the end of the day. Based off of the bids that came in, we really only would have been able to do the base bid amount if we were using that $175,000. We're recommending doing that alternate for a few reasons. The first is that I don't see a real meaningful difference between the fund balance target of $147,000 versus $175,000. Additionally, that alternate is for roads that are not all 30 foot wide with roads in the township compared to the ones in alternate two, which actually also included a few cul-de-sac. So we think that there might also be a chance to reduce the overall amount of material used, therefore our end target for a fund balance really could still be higher than $147,000. All of that said, you can pave more, I think it's a good thing to pave more, we've been recommending, but we're in base bid plus that one alternate as described, over contract cost of $487,132.
Any questions from the board? So for, for alternate two, does that get pushed till next year? Is that how we kind of manage that? So if it doesn't get done, so it's kind of one, it's in the hot, one deck this year, we don't get to it that year.
Yeah, I'll try and put it to the next year.
That may would be in the base bid, and is that how that works?
So there are, there, there could be reasons that they don't end up in the base bid. Some of the things that may hit, but with some of that were longer local roads come due. Not committing to this yet because it's still mostly a year away, but with the Fetter'sville Bridge construction hopefully being completed by the next paving project. Walton Road is going to be very due, so we'll need to be mindful of that. It's also been, what, the better part of 14 to 15 years since we paid Eaton Road. Those two by themselves are a pretty aggressive base bid, so to your questions, not like a group falls off the list and never gets consideration again, but it is contextualized in the other roads that we need to consider. And both Eaton and Walton, not available to do this year. So that will be part of the analysis of what we bring to you for authorizing a business going early.
Really, I was asking for alternate two, it was heat, or it wasn't, but that's why I was asking. True, and then Eaton Hill was the road in alternate two. Oh, sorry, Eaton Hill, right.
Thought it groups of trying to group them. Next motion.
No questions? Questions from the public?
Any public comment? Any follow-up?
No.
All right, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to award a 2025 paving contract to James D. Morrissey for the base bid and alternate one in the amount of $287,132.86.
So, motion's been moved and seconded to award the 2025 paving contract to James D. Morrissey for the base bid and alternate one in the amount of $487,132.86. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ruth.
Next item is I review and consider HBA's night game request. HBA is requesting the board's permission to do their Friday night night game at Lowmore Park on Friday, May 9th. If agreeable, the board can authorize at one time use of place by motion tonight. So from HBA, we have Rob Diggs here. And he's going to ask us for the request to have a night game with boys for Friday, May 9th.
Making the request for a night game Friday, May 9th at Lowmore Park. Yeah, Rob.
I, I know the times, like, you're probably at games at a certain time, so what is the time, say, for the games, ending schedule games, and then until like 10 o'clock and 30?
Have we done this before?
Last year was canceled, I believe, but they did this.
Well, you know, once canceled, that's not a good plan, last year. So you're just going to have the portable lights and all?
Portable lights, so that, take them down, okay. That's a good time.
I'm sure we can do this, I feel like. Absolutely. Yeah, because everybody likes to come, too. It's a really nice night.
Boys are in the night, so.
Yeah, so, and I do want to thank Corin Duff, local contractor, electrical contractor, who's going to deliver eight portable lights for the event, so that's pretty big down there. Just want to thank Corin Duff.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? Is there, I mean, I, I know we're always sensitive to the residents that are around their light, and do we get many complaints about the light?
Just very few, but I, I'll walk around, you know, and, and put notice in the front door, as long as they know it's coming ahead of time, and they actually like to attend the game. Even residents that have little kids, it's.
There's, there's, they make it all event, it's not just like baseball, there's, they track, they do face painting, they have food trucks, other things going on.
My only regrets around is, you know, just how they think it's not cut through properly, because there's a few, you know, on that way. So, and there's one resident that has a very large, shepherds electric fence, so we don't want to startle him, and we want to get started, because he's so, he's large, he's a sweetheart, but that bark is scary.
Any questions from the public?
All right, I'd like to make a motion to allow HBA one-time use of lights for Friday night lights for May 9th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the Friday night lights baseball game, games, games at Lowmore Park, Friday, May 9th, for the one-time use of lights. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was good. Okay, thank you, commissioners. I'm so, I'm so happy for comment.
Appreciate it. Item J, review and consider authorization of bid, Billon and Redline intersection improvements. The board has advised they are nearly ready to advertise the bids for the final phase of intersection improvements at Billon and Redline. This will include widening and aligning improvements on Billon app, and add in the second turn lane for Westbound. And add in the second turn lane for Westbound Redline Road on Philmont. Based on this progress, I'm going to recommend the board authorize the advertising of it. This uh, project is mostly funded by the one point two million dollar Penn Dot M T F grant. Any questions from the board?
Actually, um, let me see what's happening.
How long have they, how long have they anticipated? Several months. The, the project?
Yeah.
Will this put closures or will it just be reduced? So, we, at this point, expectation is uh, if there is any, it might be reduced. No. We have a good day time. Uh, likely date.
It's just the time.
If it, so it's adding the second turn lane on Redline, it is also addressing the alignment of Philmont Avenue. So that if you're coming from pine roads, uh, the alignment will now have lanes that go through the intersection. The width is already there in front of the bank and a lot of, right? So then those will consolidate as they do now. Uh, but there needs to, the, one of the things that took all of the time uh, for, for this project to get started was acquiring the right of way from the Farley Plaza Building. Uh, so once that was in place, that widening will kind of extend uh, onto what we perceive as their property today and allow for two lanes to merge. So those are your, kind of your two major project components. Plus, all of the stormwater regulations that go along with the project, that's the L D P for large.
When is that range completed? Because it's been a few years back.
Twenty-three.
What? Twenty-one, so we haven't talked about it, but let's some time and try to.
This, this full concept dates back to two thousand.
Right. Let me say, things happen slowly over time.
And here we go.
Well, it'll help check.
Any questions from the public? I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising the construction bid for the Philmont Redline.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to authorize advertising the construction bid for the Philmont and Redline intersectional improvements. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proof is good. Okay, no need, thank you, officials. So that's back to you, though.
All right, okay, Public Works. Here. Because I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give you a couple things. Hey boys, say the day month. So, today's land thing, hey, one ball, it's like a mind, everyone, you know? It's calling one one, you're boarding, you know, no matter what, they're fucking the tent, playing the turn, you know, you, you put that in. Utility, you'll acquire something out of the market, they're like. You definitely. Um, and, you know. The controls are better for the rest of it. Uh, I just wanted everyone to know, we're allowing the contractors using our yard to store the stones that they've already stored it back. Take it all the stone part, they've already got that, even all marked, and they're storing it down, come up with them. They don't, except a pile. Every stone is marked. They put it with each pile, so they know where they're going back.
That's because you're storing it.
Yes, sorry. Then we're gonna take the bridge sides off, we're gonna bring that bitch out, tan it, they'll say, I'll blast all that and page it out there and then.
So just to refer what we exist.
So all of the structural elements will be new.
Yeah.
Uh, but anything that could be reused that, that some sort of that trust, yeah.
Good job.
Will, will be all cleaned and reused.
And also, I keep it on the block for.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So.
So they needed a big place, they reset and made little dog return a little more. And to graciously evolve. Yeah, we're like, don't, we're all sorry.
Oh, right, yeah.
That's graciously a lot, right?
Yeah.
How you measure growth?
And I was, I know you had to probably make one for them because your comp folks saying, and I think.
Yep, so we made a new motion one month with, with our comp folks, and they know their price to finding their number that they're gonna have to, yeah, that we want. The project will work with them, too. Two projects. Yeah. Um, I know one knows about the road closures, I have homework come up, it'll play Friday, um. Joy School Construction is replacing the bridge on Morden Road and having separated former park. Affects us because the detour is going to be New Orleans Road. So that's going to start the end of this month, they give the credit where it's taken. So I would expect to see acres try to go on New Orleans Road. I'm sure they're gonna find a way over to Welsh Road. So, yep. I, by Scott, I'll give an eye.
We'll just make sure we get, get the information out there and find watch and.
Thanks, Bob. So with the, on top of project, I wonder if any slate to be freed back and wanted to.
So the fourteenth next week starts, the two re-coverage, so they're giving you the twenty-four hour day, which I think we're in under the grid. And I think most of the other portions of that are just about done. And then they'll, they'll have to recreate that. And then in June, they're gonna jump off to this about a banner road, and go from there to five.
So essentially do the phase beyond where the.
Well, it's a project.
So they're gonna jump right into the next.
Yes.
But it's doing, they'll be, they'll be nighttime closures similar to where.
Sure. When we get up there, I don't think the towns here, I don't think the states are gonna let them work at night, that's all size of action, yeah, so they're gonna have to do that during the day. And they're gonna have to figure that out. They're, and not whether they're gonna close the road during the day or have a widening operation. I would guess, knowing down here, it's not that wide, they're probably gonna. Well, there is get all that.
Maybe a little bit of additional width, as I can get into the residential area, but it all depends on, they don't remove the type, right, from there.
No.
So just it depends on what's already in there and where the new width going. If it is feasible to leave a lane open. And I'll try to push it to that, but I just don't set your expectations back.
So soon as they finish that section, do they immediately go back and recreate that?
Yeah, so they, they should pave this order, and at least they have where to try to pay that, that you'll be paid before they start.
That thing brings that dive report down both sides.
It's covered.
Yeah, yeah. Do they not need to pull that by?
I'll, I'll pitch that to the panel. I'm not sure.
He must. Yeah.
Back to the road closure, Morden, that's one of, hundred percent effective pocket, we're on it. We put like a note cut through or a packer and we larger on it, that they don't get to do the whole. What is going on? It's more, that, that way, there's, there's, it's only for like five seconds, right, 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 but that line is always, you can't packer anywhere, and people are constantly making, I write all packers, and then cut through glory day, and. Like, okay, we're not.
Yeah.
If we know.
Yeah.
What happened?
And then? Excited.
Thank you, Steve. Next item leaving on H B A, um, basketball is now completed. Uh, they had a record, seven teams made the championship this year. Um, only one winner to, so they, they did pretty good, though. They start back up in June, they're gonna have tryouts. Soccer tryouts are underway now for next fall. Um, baseball just started, opening day was last Saturday at North One Park, they had a parade up there. Thanks to Chief and his crew for blocking the streets off.
And public.
Yeah. Dropping the sign. If I have any questions?
One. Ruth, do you have any questions? That concludes my orders. Thank you so much, Commissioner Pace. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Light and Chair of the ordinance committee, Sean.
Thank you, President Kurtz. Um, I've never, items on my agenda for tonight. The first is to review and consider the massage alternative therapy use license safe ordinance and fees. So last night, uh, Herb's confused me last month. The board authorized advertising uh, an ordinance recommended by our police and code departments. As a reminder, this ordinance establishes local licensing requirements for massage and alternative therapy uses with certain exceptions. Uh, the ordinance was uh, has been advertised as prescribed by law. Uh, and in addition to the ordinance consideration, uh, corresponding fee resolution has been prepared for the items found in the ordinance. Uh, our code office research neighboring municipalities with this ordinance in place and base their recommendations on these established fees. Um, I'm gonna come back with two motions, one to adopt the ordinance and one to the fees, so let me just make sure everyone knows what we're talking about. Talk about these fees in a little moment here. So, uh, just so everyone's aware, so uh, resolution number twenty-five dash oh nine, um, would think that the, the fees for chapter one fifty-five massage therapy and alternative therapy, uh, they are as follows, uh, for massage establishment license, hundred dollars per calendar year, annual renewal required. For alternative therapy establishment license, also one hundred dollars per calendar year, annual renewal required. For massage therapy technician license, fifty dollars per calendar year, annual renewal required. And finally, for an alternative therapy technician license, the fifty dollars per calendar year, annual renewal required. Uh, I know there were questions last month about uh, when this will go into effect, and if there'd be a time period for local businesses to uh, comply, uh, as I understand it, and so sunrise police department, um, should we pass this tonight? The uh, focus is off sixty days to comply uh, with the, with the new ordinance that was. That right, throughout. Yeah. Um, I believe we discussed the ordinance at length last month, although I know I didn't hear, so, um, is there any questions for the board with respect to the ordinance or to the licensing schedule?
I have a question. Is there a rule for businesses on nerves? How are they now? That they have to comply?
Well, I mean, it's, we've been straight, like, I don't know what the plan would be in general, but I mean, I think we didn't do a count with the number.
We're going to reach out to the individual owners.
Thank you, answered my question.
And, and we've reached out to them already, letting them know that this is called.
Yeah.
And so, yeah. How does this deal compare with other challenges? When they're willing to do what they've been there. I'm sorry, I'm gonna, how much do other championships?
I'm.
Yeah, we, we based it off of, off of something, it's a little insane.
I think we're better than them. I think it's too cheap on your block.
Like.
Um, any other questions? Um, Ruth, any questions from you? And anyone else on Zoom? Any questions for anyone in the audience tonight? Okay, uh, so there's no questions, um, like, so I made two motions. The first like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number seven eighty-one as described.
Okay. Motion's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number seven eighty-one as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, and then I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty-five dash oh nine, that's the licensing fee schedule as described.
Right. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty-five oh nine, the licensing fees as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, everybody. Um, next item on my agenda is to review uh, traffic related ordinances. So, uh, recently, our traffic safety unit completed three different studies, which resulted in recommended modifications to our local traffic ordinances. He's managed to prepare the uh, three attachment manuals summarizing those recommendations. Uh, I'm gonna ask him to come up and help me explain, we'll go through them one by one, make sure they understand what we're talking about. And then when we come back, we'll make a motion to advertise the three uh, the same uh, ordinance amendments as described. So, uh, the first one has to do with parking restrictions currently in existence on Frank's Road. Um, as well as pay to show justification for the amendment of the parking regulations. So Frank's Road is, um, I believe, south of, uh, it's off of Thompson, south of the train tracks, there are a number of businesses uh, back in that area. Back in twenty-ten, uh, due to the Belmont Train Station closing, a majority of parking lot areas, there was a lot of local parking happening there. It was disrupting uh, parking for the businesses. So in twenty-ten, ordinance was created to add a time limit parking restrictions and prohibitions on that road. Uh, they were one hour into our parking zones. Uh, since then, we've received some complaints from two of the business owners, regarding the parking restrictions uh, and suggesting they may not be warranted any longer. So we did a study and, um, she said, can you talk a little bit about what the study found and also what the recommendation?
Yeah, so, uh, in, instead of just, you know, relying on just those two business owners, um, our traffic unit did go out and speak to every single business owner just to get their feedback and and input on what kind of parking they were looking for to help their employees, uh, to help their businesses run more efficiently. Um, so specifically, um, what occurred was there was, you know, no parking allowed, or one hour parking in the cul-de-sac area, um, and one of the recommended changes, after talking with business owners, is to allow legal parking there. So legal parking, you know, be parallel to the curb, so that is one of the um, additional parking areas we would allow them. Uh, what oftentimes was happening prior to this was the park was or nose in or, or the rear end in, which is not legal, um, so legal parking would be allowed in there. Um, as business owners, we're also looking specifically for uh, tractor trailer uh, loading and unloading zones specifically for two of the businesses that's currently, there's a no parking zone in front of them. Um, so it would make it difficult for their tractor trailers to get in there, um. So there would be a uh, a temporary tractor trailer parking zone across from two businesses on Frank's Road. Um, and then the other areas of Frank's Road would be, um, unlimited parking on just one side. It's not wide enough to allow parking on both sides of the road, um, so it would be basically the only no parking zone on the side closer to Philmont Avenue, uh, which we call, I guess, the west side of Frank's Road. Uh, that would be parking allowed on that entire side except for the opposite side, for the, the side that's opposite for the two, or the temporary unloading, unloading of tractor trailers would be, and it would open up parking in the cul-de-sac, illegal. And then the east side, which is like closest to the city of Philadelphia, that would be no parking, again, other than that temporary. Um, and again, this does, as, as Spencer plans, still to uh, go back to when the train station closed and there needed to be some parking restrictions because part of the parking, all of Thompson Road, and then all Crazy Road and all of Frank. Um, the only one that specifically has, uh, a large amount of businesses with a large amount of employees was Frank's Road, all businesses at that. Um, and so the feedback was far smaller than when everybody was happy with this proposal.
Well, any, any questions about, uh, this particular amendment proposal?
Chief, I see that the temporary tractor trailer parking is gonna be for just unloading and loading.
Correct. They will not make parking there overnight.
Or anything like that.
Specifically, the two businesses that are, anybody knows the area, it's Hyramant Packing has two businesses that, and they deal with tractor trailer coming in now there, uh, during the daytime to make their deliveries. Uh, so that zone is specifically that we need for them, basically. Um, none of the other businesses utilize tractor trailer deliveries, um. So that would areas that depend on help that business, and then the parking zone on the opposing side of that is probably just to, um, allow to be wide enough for cars to go.
We'll be letting it sign up, which is.
Yes.
Right.
And this will make it better, hopefully, for, uh, this has been one because of the extreme limit on parking. Um, no matter how much, uh, Department of Public Works would go out and put new signs out for us, they would disappear at night, um, and, uh, it would make it very hard for us to enforce any parking regulations on that very one. Um, so this will kind of make everybody happy, they believe we'll have a place to park as well as.
Um, for moves, the next one, any questions from the public on this particular ordinance amendment? I see nothing concerned. Uh, all right, moving to the second one, so the second one, uh, second amendment proposed here regards to a potential no left turn restriction for Bucksmont Road. This is northbound at its intersection with County Line Road. So, uh, last year, Baltimore Police responded to a serious vehicle collision at Bucksmont Road and County Line. Um, and in response, um, it was termed by our traffic safety officers that a sight distance study should be needed to ascertain the left turns, could be made safely there. Um, the study revealed that the sight distance was within just a couple of feet of a level distance for a road with no downgrade, downward grade, excuse me. Um, and the police sought input from Penn Dot, uh, traffic engineers to verify their findings. Um, she said, can you talk about what Penn Dot suggested and?
Yes, so, uh, Penn Dot did come out at least and, um, give us approval to do this based off of what our traffic safety officers found. Um, and they did actually mark the designated areas where they believe the no park, no left turn sign should be posted. Um, one would be on, it goes, but actually on the Bucks County side of County Line Road, so as the cars come up, they see it all the way in that direction. And then also on the same side of the road, either near the stop sign or on the opposing side. Uh, but it's all been marked, approved by Penn Dot. Uh, they were going to come out, they still have not for us, they're quite busy as well in their traffic studies, just to kind of confirm some of our numbers. Um, they have not at this important time, but like I said, they did give, uh, permission for us to, uh, make that no left turn restriction we saw with. So, and the big concern with this one was, um, it's just kind of too close for comfort. It's one of those roads we have in the township that, um, I'm fairly certain of this, if we ask the residents in there, they probably tell all their family, do not make a left turn out of that road, just because of the. do not make a left turn out of that road just because of the dynamics of how it is. It's a large crest of a hill to your left. And then the downward grade, obviously, that comes down. So with the speeds of that happen on County Line Road, with that downward grade, it's just safer for everybody. If we make that a new left turn and doesn't eliminate options for the weapons in that area. There are multiple different options that they can go down to other stop signs on two adjacent roads. As well as if they wanted, they could go down the traffic way of Prime Road and still make their turn safely without having this habit that we saw.
Any questions from the board?
I do, and it's it relates to this. I was actually going to bring it up later in the medium, but it's just we're talking about County Line Road now. I know there was an accident not long ago on County Line Road, and I don't know if speed had anything to do with it, but two residents have approached me in the last probably thirty days or so, just complaining about the excessive speed along County Line Road, the aggressive drivers, you know, coming, you know, really traveling I guess, like westbound from Hudson Avenue, you know, heading off on that stretch of road from, you know, where the township begins all the way to Huntington Pike. And, you know, we have a Buck Road, we have a little bit of a bottleneck because the road gets a little, even though it's one lane all the way down. Several residents have complained that, you know, they're going in excess of the speed limit, like maybe by five, seven miles an hour. Cars pass them either on the right hand side on the shoulder, let's say they're not going fast enough. So my my question is, is there anything that we can do? And I I don't know how that works with Bucks County being, you know, the other half of the road, but, you know, I've gotten a couple of complaints about it. I I travel on that road, I I see the the aggressive speed. We had a really serious accident not long ago, you know, on that road. We're talking about left hand turns now, that it's just like, that is a dangerous stretch of road. And I don't know if there's anything that we can do to to try to, you know, curtail some of the speech or enforcement with some new speed sign that we just purchased or are purchasing. There's something where you can do, you know, along that stretch. Yeah, so all those things, those ones we can do, the speed signs sometimes are provided visible to turn. Enforcement, we can certainly be out there, out there. We do have speed timing lines in several different areas along County Line Road that help our officers, you know, monitor that. As you said, the one concern within is that have committed Bucks County, so we don't, we cannot control anything of any vehicles going westbound. So coming out of Philadelphia and staying on that Bucks County side. Once they cross WL line, then we could increase something.
Is that how it works though?
Yes, they would have to be on our side of the WL line. And then the other concern with that is it is a safe road. So any modifications of speed limits would have to be handled by Penn Dot. We can make recommendations still, they may seek our input, but generally, they would make their decision. I know they did make, you know, those two lanes for many of the years, you know, they've actually made them all down to one lane. That seems to be some of the aggressiveness is that, you know, cars, you know, because of those two lanes, and that's why we grow it up the township. You could pass up now, you really can't, so people get impatient. And, you know, I would ask that, you know, maybe your, you know, conversations that you have with Southampton and others along County Line Road, that maybe there's a little bit of a concerted effort to this kind of ramp up, maybe enforcement along there, maybe traffic safety signs, just to, you know, show that that we're trying to control, you know, the speed and aggressive drivers situation.
That's your end with both lower and upper, right?
Correct, yes. The bumper on their side is the line for.
Any other questions from the board? And anything for the public running the no left turn on Bucksmont? Okay, so moving on to our last proposed amendment, so this one is in reference regarding a suggested amendment to our current parking of certain vehicles restricted ordinance. This ordinance one ninety eight dash twenty four dot eight. So the history here, last month, Belmont Police responded to the area of rammed run and coming line road for a parking complaint. In this particular instance, it was reported by a resident that a tractor trailer was parked on the shoulder of County Line Road. And it was creating a sight distance issue and creating a hazard for vehicles turning off the ramming line. In this particular instance, Belmont Police was able to, were able to contact a tractor trailer owner. They were able to move it and they conducted this, a a safety, a port or the safety study, excuse me, to see if there were sight lining concerns and double parking concerns on that area. Chief, can you talk about the findings from that junior study?
Yes, so it is quite a large shoulder right in that area. So the the sight distance, again, we did also, we don't depend on this, I don't want to state proof. We did get their blessing to, you know, we can do whatever parking restriction we want on the stage, though they don't care about that. So we felt it was most appropriate to at least make the recommendation amend our current parking certain vehicle restricted ordinance, which only pertains to local roads to make it for all roadways in the township. This way, if there are those areas of state roads where someone may choose to park a tractor trailer, we make the same rules for all roads in the township. So again, although it didn't create a sight distance issue just because of the width of the shoulder and ability to move out and look past that truck, we just felt it was necessary to kind of make that the the same for all roads. And then we just send Penn Dot approval for that. Other concern of the double parking, so that is already restricted, that's already against the law. We can enforce that just on potentially a vehicle for the loans. We don't need to make an adjustment for that. The specific complaint and plaintiffs in this case will all like to just call us if they see any of those issues and we can come out and address them. We did actually, in the end, they asked the tractor trailer to remove what we have until he's been back in certain parts. So we think he's trying to utilize that as a place to park his tractor trailer. And the kind of this way, people can do that, we felt this was better, and keep that in the same.
Any questions from the board? And any questions from the public?
Just a real quick one, was that addressed?
Indent by yourself.
I'm sorry, Martha George, Dale Road, does that address? Obviously, the full grid tractor trailer, does that address this tractor part?
Uh, I'm fairly certain the tractor would be over nine thousand pounds. Steve may do that. I'm fairly certain because the tractor is well over nine.
Well, you know, you see that in northeast where they hold on where they want it, just to trap.
Let me believe that's it. It's possible that because of that proximity to the city, there's going to be someone that lives in Bucks County across County Line. There could be someone else inside Philadelphia.
Thank you for coming.
All right, excellent. So thank you, she said, for all your help for there. So in summary, there are, I'm going to propose that we advertise three traffic related ordinance amendments. The first, in summary, removals and repeals to section one ninety eight dash sixty, schedule X D one, this is time limit parking specifically for Frank's Road, as well as some additional modifications to allow for different parking on that particular street. The second, in summary, will put signage to prevent left hand turns from Bucksmont Road onto County Line Road. And those placements are going to be where Penn Dot engineers made the recommendations in alignment with our traffic study. And finally, the third amendment would be to amend the existing wording in our current ordinance one ninety eight dash twenty four dot eight, the parking of certain vehicles restricted that reads township owned streets, which changed that to all streets within the township to account for this particular section of County Line Road. I'd like to make a motion to advertise very the language here, the three traffic related ordinance amendments as described.
Motion's been moved and seconded to advertise the three traffic related ordinance amendments as described the evening. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Wonderful, so my next item on my agenda is to review zoning hearing board agenda and decisions. So we'll start with April agenda. The zoning hearing board will be meeting next Thursday, April seventeen. Seventeenth, please correct me if I'm wrong. There are four applications on the April agenda. The first is application number twenty five dash oh five. This is the application of Andre Leibinsky and Maria Vetsing of five seventy three Philip Road. They're seeking a variance to allow increase of the maximum lock coverage from twenty five percent to thirty three point seven percent. You recall, there are different versions of the application from prior attempts. This was pushed from last month, meaning the original project was completed without permits. The second application is application number twenty five dash zero seven. This is the application of Alexandra Darian of thirty five sixty four Timney Swift Drive. Seek a variance to allow a six foot high private fence where four foot and fifty percent open is required. Application number twenty five dash zero eight is the application of Will Barito Malav Jr. of one zero zero three Cornford Drive. They seek a variance related to an in-law suite, including reduction of the side yard setback to sixteen feet, ten inches, exceeding the maximum square footage of seven hundred square feet, nine hundred twenty five square feet. And finally, application number twenty five dash zero nine. This is the application of Albert Aloyan for thirty three ninety one Belmont Avenue, who seeks a variance to allow a six foot high privacy fence for four feet and fifty percent open is required and to allow a reduction in the individual and aggregate side yard setbacks to allow construction of an addition. Now, I know, as mentioned earlier, she had a question regarding application number twenty five dash zero nine. I'd like to invite other, other one of our officers come up and do you want to, if you want to ask your question, we have Ted up here to help answer any questions you have.
Uh, no, if you could just talk about what's going on with this, because when I looked at it online, it looks like that fence is already there. So.
The fence is already constructed and so is the car. So the carport's about five hundred and twelve square foot, both were done without permits.
Okay, and the neighbors, how did the neighbors feel about it?
We have not heard from any of the people.
Okay, when we put out a zoning board notice, though, they get they get notified, right?
They get notified, everyone within five hundred feet gets notified that they folks want to do something that doesn't conform the zoning and their property gets posted as well.
Okay, so we'll, should we wait and see what happens at the zoning hearing board? Or do we want to venture an opinion on this? What do you, what does the rest of the board think?
My recommendation would be to allow the process to play out. This isn't the first application to go in front of the zoning hearing board for work that's already been done. Probably won't be the last, and I think they have a pretty strong opinion about those types of applications and and the information they need to render the judgment. So in my opinion, I would not do anything different.
Okay.
And Ted, do we go through anything, they receive a fine?
So it's, there's a double fee for that, without a permit. Most of everything has been done, so they're going to have to dig up footers. They're going to have to show us any work that has been concealed. So they're going to have to open anything up that they already concealed. So, yes, they would have a double fee and time of rebuilding some of the stuff that they've done.
And so that would happen regardless of the decision made here. This is to allow them to take you. This is currently out of, out of our, our.
Which is out of compliance.
That's right, so if they were not successful in the variance request, then we're into that phase of, well, then what, yeah, what else? So the the answer to that would then determine what happened. But you described what happened regardless.
Well, yes, enough, right? So if they receive the project, then they would apply for building permits. And after they applied for building permits, we would do a review. We would go out into the field and then look at any footings, any beams, like all that stuff. We would do inspections for from footing to framing. And if any frame was completed and covered up, then we would ask that to be recognized.
And I would say, well, if they are not successful, and then say the solution is that they need to remove the carport, then really, there's not much for us to inspect because they're actually moving the thing that we would have. Yep.
I have a question regarding the first application twenty five oh five.
Yes.
That five seventy three Philip Road.
Yes.
I believe they've been, so I mean, here in one, so what?
I think about sport.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yeah. So what, what, the, what do they want?
So they're getting, each time they're going to the zoning hearing board, this again was worked without permits. And each time they have asked for the patio and pull that in to, each time they've reduced it a little bit, but just not enough that the zoning hearing board felt it was fair.
So that that explains a lot, that this is the leftover, and I'm trying to make things right.
Yep.
So the one with Belmont Avenue, I wanted to cooperate with yours and accept it for this, or any opposition to it?
No, they they hired an engineer, they got a site plan, they they showed us everything. He has another business on Frank's Road, so like we deal with one other issues.
Any other questions about any of the upcoming applications? Thank you very much. Okay, so last month, zoning hearing board ran two decisions in its March meeting. The first was for application number twenty four, twenty five dash zero four. This was the application of Ronald G. Betts of five sixteen Welsh Road. I saw a variance to allow six foot high front yard fence, this variance was granted. And application number twenty five dash zero six, the application of Lee N. Churney, Churney of eight thirty seven Worthy Lane. We saw the variance to reduce the aggregate forty forty foot side yard setback to thirty three point four feet to construct a one story addition. This variance was also granted. Any questions about decisions rendered in the March meeting? Okay, with that, I'll move on to my final agenda item, which is my laydown positions report. The first one's for the zoning hearing board, which I just gave, and the second is for the building cohort appeals. Did I mean, that's all I have to report?
Thank you, Commissioner Lanten. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Housen, Chair of the Public Property Committee, Ruth.
Hi, my first item on the agenda is related to the Historic Architect Review Board, or HARB. Last month, we tabled the decision on the Zig Shack Smoke slash Vape Shop sign. We wanted them to tone down the color, they have done that. They have given us, and actually, they've already put it up. I don't know if the, if it's a permanent sign, because it still looks too big to me. But our code people will work on that with them. All I can work on is the is the HARB item. So what we have is a maroon color as opposed to a cherry red, which the HARB felt is more in keeping with our township colors. Does anyone have any questions on the board?
No, Ruth, I mean, I think the color is much better than that bright red.
Does anyone have any questions in the in the room? Or online?
Before you do come join us up here, is your question specific to this application?
General question, is it the wrong evening for that?
Not the, not yet, the right time. So take a seat, we'll get to you when it's time for a general question. Not time for general questions yet.
But I should stay. Yeah, sure, yeah, all right. Thank you.
I was so excited to answer a question. So are there any other questions now? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for application number twenty five dash oh two as described.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve this certificate of appropriateness for application number twenty five oh two as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I see you, Ruth. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, my next report is on what is happening in the sewer department. Our, our, the, the stations are moving along very well. In fact, the last one is just getting its functional work done. In other words, the others are already in process, already done, they just need some cosmetic work. You know, one needs plantings, well, they both need plantings. It was too early in the year to do that. And the other needs some cleanup and restoration work. The last one that they're working on is around the corner from me on Hollowell Station. And I talked to them last week, there was a minor problem, which the woman whose property was on court called, and it was responded to quickly and efficiently. I'd like to thank both the contractor and Steve for handling that very well. The last item is that the Beth Air Station pump replacement is getting done as we speak, and hopefully will be finished this week. We're also starting that project where we're looking at the linings of some of the sewer lines to make sure that we have no infiltration. Um, that should reduce our exceedances and it's good for the environment. It should, uh, keep, um, uh, groundwater out of our sewage system. Uh, does anybody have any questions on, on the sewer part of that? No, okay, let me tell, the, the Lowermoreland Township Authority also met on April second. Um, it turns out that they have, thanks to our, uh, uh. Manager Hoffman, they have completed their audit already for last year. And, um, their total assets for the year ended at about two and a half million dollars, which sounds like a lot of money, but remember, it is. A sewer authority where everything is very expensive. Um, the, the pump replacement for Beth Ayers was something like, what, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Do you remember?
Something like that, however, that, that cost is actually coming out of the township's sewer costs.
Yeah, but you know, uh, what, what I'm saying is this, that's what this money is available for those kind of things, if we absolutely have to do it. Shut up. Sorry, my dog. Um, and, uh. That is about all that happened in that, in that meeting. Are there any questions about the Lowermoreland Township Authority meeting? No, uh, anybody from the public? Nope, well, that completes my agenda.
I have one question before we close. Yeah, how, how, how you're all making out the group with, uh, with regard to your, um, you know.
Right, we all, we all got a little, yes, I know what you're referring to, yes. We all got a little busy, some people have done little bits, but, uh, the bulk of the process has not, uh, you know. Moved forward as much as we might have hoped, uh, you know, every day is another day, we'll keep trying to move it forward.
Well, just little by little, and it's.
Exactly.
Taking part in this and moving forward, it's an excite, exciting, thank you. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Canale, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, Jeff.
Thank you, President Carrance. First up on my agenda is Chief Smith's report.
Um, my full report was submitted, however, just some highlights, uh, from last month. Um, I keep saying this every month, another very busy month, uh, over two thousand calls per service. Again, a lot of that is, uh, self-initiated stuff, as well as call for, uh, call for us to come out and help. Um, our biggest things this, uh, last month, we had a smattering of different kinds of tests, thankfully not a rash of any one time, but. Another vehicle theft, we had a bunch of retail thefts from some of our establishments and some of the construction site tests. Um, so, you know, just remind people, you're, you're driving by either specifically at construction sites, you'll see someone there at night, if you shouldn't be there, just call us in case we don't find it. Uh, or else we're worried we'll catch a couple of them, we act thankfully. Um, we did unfortunately have some current emergency events at some of our parks, Lowermoreland Park and Valley Center Park. Same thing, you see something suspicious, um, and we call. Uh, we have increased our patrols at all times, but, you know, while we think these may be occurring at night, some of them could be during the day, uh, weekends and all that kind of stuff, but, um. And certainly just call us when you can come out, but we're trying our best to be out there as much as we can. We, we all took down plans and split it, so we did just to kind of show our correctness. Uh, a few, uh, big arrests that we had this last month, um, business on County Line Road, it popularized three separate times. Uh, we've made two arrests, um, several others identified, so great work by our officers that responded, as well as effective on the follow-up. And then we had a business on Philmont Avenue that suffered a, uh, large amount of theft and fraud from an internal employee. Uh, stealing gas, ordering supplies, borrowing checks, so lengthy investigation. And our detectives have made one, uh, big arrest in that, and then there are several other suspects, again, there's arrests are reported as well, so. Again, some hard work by the officers. Our, uh, community events in March, um, we did, we, um, read across America, um, very, had officers reading in Murray Avenue, we got a spine road. That was great, the long march, um, multiple officers, multiple classrooms, uh, set off our school resource officers. Uh, keeping us all in there, we're about at least ten different officers that landed school reading. I'd like to think I was one of the best, but it's, you know, the votes come back, so. Uh, we also helped out at Lowermoreland High School's Career Day with the Assistant Fire Marshal Charlie. Um, both our R S R O's were there, um, as always is the case, the, uh, K nine steals the show from all of us, so. K nine's come in, everybody wants to ask them questions, but there were five different sessions, so we got to meet a bunch of kids from the high school. Um, and hopefully kind of help, uh, get them towards, uh, careers in law enforcement or public safety to be a summer builder. Uh, so it was a great day for, for everyone's goal. Uh, last but not least, we had our first ever RV meeting, our baby organization meeting, so every single, uh, congregation, uh, was invited to come out and meet myself, uh, Lieutenant Huttick. And as well as our three chaplains, um, great meetings about collaboration, kind of seeing what we can do for them, some of the things that we're able to do. Um, also finding out some of the problems they're experiencing and giving them some resources that they can help their, their confidence. Uh, so we did have meters and representatives from six of the congregations. Uh, Pastor Petty hosted it at the First Baptist Church on Murray Avenue, so it was great. Um, and again, I think we asked, and we put a lot of questions and kind of, uh, put a name to a face for us, it was a big performance, like overall, very good.
These are worship and spiritual.
Um, curious how, how have things been with the, um, school bus camera and passing or putting the numbers?
Um, so I, you know, I didn't get the report this month, I know last, so March, I got the report from February, January, and it had gone down a little bit, but they're still. White tie amazingly, uh, you do have some repeat offenders, you know, for doing that, we've noticed. Um, but, um, you know, the, the goal is, and the hope is that eventually this is all going to start, um, you know, bringing them over down. I did speak to obviously regional chiefs on this as well, and we're seeing the same thing where. It, it would be one of those things where you would, you would honestly expect to see a decrease in this, but we're staying roughly the same. Um, so we did have a slight increase, but nothing, nothing really noticed.
What's the bond, are we doing for?
Uh, it's three hundred dollars, civil fines, or doesn't go on their driver's license. Um, or they're for their insurance companies, and that's the worst side. Now, if our officers catch it, it's, it's the same fine, there's, there's other things associated with that. And our goals, works like all sorts of vehicles, different things, there's, we have school buses that are passing, other school buses and getting violations as well. Um, I can say that's not the case, but that is the thing that.
Chief, so there's a second violation, does the fine go up or?
It's, it's not, there's no way to make any difference, the system just, just that, so. Um, and without our officers actually witnessing the violation, we're just approving the violations.
From the camera.
From the camera, so.
Um, I think the last one you reported, it was in the low, a few hundred.
Uh, we worked that for a while, we, for like three months in a row, at least, we had over three hundred violations.
Concerned. Just one thing also that's less serious nature, but I'm glad to see there's warnings being given, given out for, you know, you constantly do this. But for the dogs that are running at large.
Yeah, when, when it gets closer, we do.
I know I throw a warning, and then like, you know, I'm a violation.
Yes, so we generally try and have that standard with everybody, it's the warning first time, it will become an issue where I start deciding if I will or not.
Appreciate you. Especially in a freezing cold weather, with dogs that.
Get around side shore.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Sheldon.
My, uh, final issue is solid, exact, and can we be like training content, and I believe you submitted the reports only making it across the board, but when, uh, when we bump down. Uh, as you can see, my written report has been submitted, it's a joint report between the other communities. Uh, the first section that you'll see, I've attended a number of different meetings throughout the month, uh, the council meetings, ministers meetings. Both fire company officers meeting, first management meeting, career chiefs meeting, the meeting after meeting after meeting. But it's all good because it brings back good information and we're able to share that with, uh, we're trying to accomplish here in the community. As far as training goes, as we continue with training, as you know, we're going to get new power ladder in, it's an ongoing process, we're trying to get everybody up to speed on that. If we're there and now, we're trying to just keep everybody up to the, in the pace, we want them to be familiar with the truck and using the truck. All the groups, the career staff, the volunteers staff, the site staff are constantly out doing that, and they're making great progress on that. Um, there's been a number of con ed classes that I've attended, that I have to keep up my licenses with. In last month, we had ten members from both organizations attending South Davidson Regional Training Conference that was held in Upper Delaware High School. That was an eight-hour day of, uh, UTEM's training. Uh, we also had the power ladder out there on display, we had some displays, so we got some good exposure for the fedders being acquired or rescued. Uh, Ted's been doing a wonderful job preparing the truck to be out there and be on display. He spent the day out there talking to all the numbers of the folks who were very interested in what we're doing, and then also what the truck is all about. Um. For the personnel, we continually are interviewing folks, unfortunately, in the business we're in. On the other side, we seem to go through people a little bit faster than we'd like, but, uh, there's a lot of opportunity out there, some people move from place to place, and unfortunately, that's a downside of what we're dealing with, but. We are keeping our staffing levels where we promised we would be at, so we continuously strive to do that through the profit of, uh, interviewing the hires. It takes a lot of time to do that, but we, we did, myself, Ken, and Fred spent a lot of time up there on that task. Uh, administratively, uh, as a result of the officers' meetings, I implement or developed and implemented six standard operating procedures that we put in place between all the groups. Uh, that's to make our operations efficient, as we come together and operate together, want to make sure everybody's on the same page, so that's been put in place and working out well. Uh, as of, uh, last month, you heard we committed a report on, uh, an advanced, uh, pre-hospital system that we were looking to move forward with. I'm going to take your hat off, it's Commissioner, I mean, your paramedic hat, through the efforts of the paramedic Canale. Uh, he, uh, spearheaded this program, bringing this advanced life support stroke ambulance concept into UTEMs that we, uh, we protect. We spent a lot of time meeting with different individuals from, um, the Director of Montgomery County Emergency Help. The Executive Director of Ben Selma Rescue Squad, who sponsored, uh, that run of the program, represented us from Jefferson Hospital. Uh, our doctor, our commanding physician is present with that, a number of us on the staff. We sat down and they presented it with an educational program as to what it's all about. And through, uh, Mr. Canale's, uh, personal experiences, I'm glad he brought that to us, because the, uh, system is going to. Benefits our residents tremendously, particularly it has to do with stroke care. What it does, it actually brings medicine to them in the field, instead of taking them to hospital, that would get to achieve that, which can be detrimental to their care. With that said, we've decided to go forward with this, uh, remembering of understanding it's being signed up between the rescue, uh, two rescue squads. And then we're putting together some policies and procedures for our folks, so there's an education has to go along with that. Not only to our members, but to educate the public, while we get out there to call. But it's a little bit different where we take a step back, instead of stupid and running, we, we actually treat the patient on the site. They actually get a cat scan right at the location of the incident. And then they get administered the proper medications to start the process, which refers to the damage that can happen, so it's a big, big program. But Joe gets the credit on this, he brought it to us, we're going to be thinking about it, I believe, we're probably going to be the first one to recover a tenant to offer the service. You know, then to no call service, great. Okay, as far as response and our statistics, uh, I'm going to give you monthly response numbers here as far as the, uh. Benchmark for seventeen twenty of our meeting for the month of March, the station nineteen, the Lowermoreland, the Valley Station. Met a goal of fifty-six percent of the time. And the nineteen-one Renathen Station met a goal at eighty-seven point one percent of the time. There are both numbers that are up, but I think that's where we're going to be standing off for a while, since it's something in power issues, our kings and tribes have. This is based on our intimate, or our intermediate plan that we put into place. So it's, it's doing what we expected it to do, which is good. We'd like to have it a little bit higher. One of the things I'd like to point out, though, on the nineteen-one station, where we had said eighty-seven point one percent. Their average response time is six minutes, falls seconds, that's because they have career staff on twenty-four seven. Where it brings that percentage number down a little bit is because its personnel is at three point one five percent, or a number for the call per member.
Mark, quick question, are you paying the personnel that have spawned on maybe a nice apparatus in that?
No, suppression personnel, all the suppression apparatus.
But if they're totally true. Will that make the criteria meet, and you have a number of?
They're not always available, this is based on the call.
And we do, how many times are we actually?
I can try, I don't know, we can break that out through the report system.
And the, 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 uh, sixty, fifty-six percent, is that the minimum?
It's based off of work personnel, the problem is, and Kate and I are working on this. The program that we're using down here, which got dated and is going to be replaced, we're working, actually, it's one of the things that we're working on. Extracting the numbers every time we extract it comes out different, depending on how you pull it out. But I'm basing that on, it's for suppression personnel. It's due to some enhancements that were made through, uh, Chief and I, when we talked about the stipend program increasing it, we put on some nighttime stipend. And now we have some overnight stipends that are covering for the volunteer to respond to everything. We're trying to model off of our, uh, call line based on the calls per hour. We know our daytime hours are the business, so that's where we want to focus and focus the most on, but we still have to be able to meet goals at the other times, too, so it's a little bit challenging. Again, it's, it's more manpower related than anything, once you get that, I mean, get on the road some year and, and you can accomplish that twenty-four seven, a hundred percent, that's one of the.
Can you explain why, so, as my understanding, we're operating at the single station?
The two stations, single organization.
Right, single organization, two stations, so. I mean, why do we, why, why are we still reporting numbers for each station if it weren't unified as an organization? Because that's probably just because I don't understand.
Well, I haven't gotten, we're both on the same reporting system yet, and that's what we're trying to test.
So this is just, uh, by virtue, you have two different data that you can't merge together, okay?
And even trying to get both organizations on the same, which is one of our work group tasks, and we're marking on, is presenting internally to facilities as well as. We gotta careful how to do it, because we can hinder our ability, we have their individual grants, which benefits us right now. And once we combine those together, we have to be niggling, completely merged in order to double and, and sustain these that way things, so we're trying to play that little carefully. Uh, prior call of interest, on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, we were dispatched both stations down to sixty-six Robin Downing and Rockland's Peak for a structural fire. Uh, we provided mutual aid from both, uh, stations and sites to search and rescue. Opening up walls for extension and suppression extinguishment operators, and we pulled out two dogs out of the fire. They were taken away, still breathing, so I don't know what the outcome was, but unfortunately, it was a, uh, a sad part of that call. On March twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, we're in here. We assisted the public works, sort of apartment, we chases some gasoline fumes that were down to the sanitary sewer system. Uh, we take that very seriously, because any hydrocarbon-based product that can come to the sanitary system can be detrimental to the filtering systems. We wanted to make sure we could get a handle on that. We spent probably a couple, I think it was two to three hours chasing that around. We couldn't find the actual source, but we were able to validate the system and, and to off gas vapor, uh, areas of that, and I assume everything we needed calls back after that for now. Uh, as far as calls for the month. For the, uh, emergency medical calls in Renathen eleven, eighty-nine in Lowermoreland, sixty-nine other. In total, calls for the month were a hundred and sixty-nine with five hundred and thirty-four years so far. Uh, fire call in Renathen made six. Uh, or for Renathen, I think it was six in Renathen, then thirty-one in Lowermoreland. Three other calls outside of the area for a total of forty calls, and there are a hundred and fifteen calls for the year. And then at the nineteen station in the Valley, thirty-six calls for the month for Lowermoreland. Calling in Renathen, four other, for a total of forty-four calls. And you're to be one hundred and twenty-eight calls. Now, in conclusion, I mentioned also last month that we were putting on a third ambulance at the, uh. Nineteen-one station, the ambulance is being purchased by the Renathen Fire Company, so that was a planned expansion prior to that. Uh, it's currently in production, we're looking to take, delivering that mid-May. Uh, I will be starting our fleet reduction plan that we talked about during my presentations in June. We're going to be putting up the first piece of apparatus for sale. That'll be, uh, an engine out of the Renathen Station, it's nineteen-one. It has some mechanical issues that we just discovered, we're trying to get that resolved, before we put it up for sale. That will be the beginning of that process, so we can start to scale down the duplication of equipment. And lastly, uh, I'm supposed to be, Ted and I are supposed to be meeting on the twenty-second with Pierce in regards to signing off on the. And lastly, uh, I'm supposed to be meeting, Tanner's supposed to be meeting on the twenty-second with Pierce in regards to signing off on the final plan of the engine that was part of that fuel truck purchase, uh, that will go into production probably early summer, and we've got the November delivery in the that concludes what I have for you.
Go ahead, I, I was just gonna ask, the proceeds for the sales of, as you're producing the fleet, um, do those go to the factory, the fire unit? That's correct, or are they distributed to any?
I think that truck, I believe, I'm not totally sure, I don't know if it's the borough of the, the fire company, but they would go back to them and then love to figure out how to help you with the duty from there.
Okay, if it goes back to the borough, then we gotta figure out that.
That's correct.
But you're saying you're not sure if that's?
I'm not sure which one is that truck. I can tell all the trucks that are inherited by the township, uh, I'm not sure of the, since it's a whole next. But we'll have to work on it, see where we're gonna get with it, so, any other questions?
Any other questions for Chief Showmaker from the public board and the board?
I do, Chief, it's my understanding, correct, if, if, um, I might, that all the ambulances. Also, with the group program, and with that, you, we, 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 um, on the arm of more, you know. Strokes and decrease and, um, the stroke paper will be, will be, will be, but all three ambulances, what purchase we're doing is there?
That's correct. And just so you know, at, at the ambulance purchase, announcing about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But, you know, building a cost, and we saved on this, right, about a hundred thousand dollars, we that cost me five fifty. What happened was, we found an ambulance that was in an accident, apparently newer ambulance, only a few years old. We're able to recover the box off, that's the back part of the ambulance where we do the workout, and, and reach chassis, it goes to a new chassis, it's a big save for us. So that's in the process, and should be pretty quick to get that back, you know, the equipment's already been ordered for it to replace and.
So I'm just wondering to explain, with uh, Chief Showmaker's report regarding the stroke shot. That's gonna be doing it on a Ben Selma MS, we're gonna be learning a lot more in coming weeks. And we need to do a serious community education with this building, because it kind of changes the dynamic of how we operate. As Chief Showmaker stated, used to be you would get there, and you'd get the patient stabilized, and, and transport to the hospital as quickly as possible. To get him in front of a consultation, we would order a CT stand, and then possibly do life-saving procedures, or provide medications that could bust the clot inside their head. This new ambulance, as Chief Showmaker stated, will show up and be totally dispatched with our local units. When they get there, person's willing to go to Jefferson Hospital, that truck will be continued in. Our guys will do the initial assessment stabilization, as they do now, minimum, absolutely, a hundred and ten percent. We'll do the initial treatment, stabilize them. The ETA for that truck, it's gonna be coming out of Ben Selma, it's gonna be a little bit longer than their last bars, but the onset time shouldn't matter that much. Because we're gonna be inside the house stabilizing the patient initially. Once that truck's here, it needs to set off, it's about forty-five minutes to get stabilized out, from my understanding. Person will be taken out immediately stand, and they'll actually be assessed by a neurosurgeon, or a neuro.
Yeah, from Chelsea, right here.
Right in the back of the truck, then we'll detail assess them. It's determined that they have a clot, they'll be able to give the life-saving medication right in the back of that unit, and transport the person to Jefferson Hospital. Damage onset to stand time right now is about seventy-five minutes plus. This will take that time, cut down to forty minutes, almost half of the, you know, the information you've seen. And as everybody knows, time is tissue when it comes to your brain, so if we restore that flow, it'll be huge. And as Chief, as Showmaker stated, it'll be the first time that there's gonna be a unit actually dispatched in Montgomery County. Without special.
Is, is, this is from a part of specialized training that you, that we administer and?
So, no, we are not administering drugs, there's actually a separate ambulance responding that carried the drugs, have their own specialized crew that does have anything, they're gonna take over, they're gonna transport, and there won't be no reduction in billing also, because they reimburse whatever they charge to points of local score.
Okay, so this, this doesn't mean you, how what people are gonna be doing?
No, it's more.
The new part is, are folks learning how to adjust to that system?
I see.
I had a sit-in transferring, a little bit more detailed.
We're still providing care.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I thought there's something, I was, I was wondering what the, what's wrong with training is like, I was wondering if, if there was any impact or opportunity with respect to hiring, you know, if we're doing something specialized, is, I understand now, but. Well, just, you talk about the regular hiring, I, this is something that would.
Yeah, this is not gonna impact that.
Well, I, I mean, I see it as positive, I just misunderstood, but we were.
No, the bill for the staff off to that, and then there's a transfer of care.
We'll give you a lot more information, we'll have the truck here on the scale, we'll check out P S A's on the township, we'll go to the borough side, close the park. Just trying to actually feel like, you know, if you're walking up out there. All right. Uh, as Chief Showmaker already stated, fire marshal Shaw is not here tonight, we received his report and we accept the wire report. That brings me to my liaison reports, civil service, there is no healing, I believe that, or no important handling. Regarding the library, the library ran a manual apron for the township on Sunday, April sixth. It was a great turnout, great day, we beat the rain by about one minute, so we gotta love that. I gotta give a special shout out to all the personnel from the library, and also Steve and the public works crew, absolutely remarkable job. Everything was set up. Yeah, probably the correct, so, cool thing there. Um, couple of things, library, first they have adult chess club, you know, meets twice a week, Tuesdays at two, and Thursdays at five thirty AM. All levels of players are welcome. Friday, the two can, Mako Roots, family and property history reviews will be presented. Your, if you are interested in the. This is a good way to start. Our mystery book club will meet on Saturday, six, two AM, copies of book, to be everywhere, our level. But this is National Library Week, and today it is Library Worker's Day. I would like to take them to thank the employees of Hunter Valley Library, who provided access to. Research, learn, entertain, and community engagement. And I gotta give a special shout out to Pam Doyle, she does an absolutely amazing job up there at the library, and her staff is incredible. That's all I have for my report.
Evening, and I will now open up for public participants, non-agenda. Would anyone like to address the board? Am I the only one? It's not an act. Which, either two. Uh, state or nation address for the rest. Kurelli, uh, being, Jesus has favored me, family been there since December nineteen. Before everyone here was born, that's just like nineteen, I hope, what, what's the date? I, I, I. Memory's fading a little bit, can you all forgive me?
What is your question for the?
Fifty-seven. How could I not suddenly grab that, it's fifty-seven.
There we go, what's your question for the?
It's just some general things, I don't necessarily expect an answer here, but uh, I heard sort of a rumor recently about a uh, high-rise apartment, I was just wondering if anyone could share some, some details, thoughts. The high-rise apartment.
Is, is there a specific location, I don't?
Uh, I have no idea, I, I just heard a couple of people chatting and.
So maybe, the one that is, has final approval from the board is a, a two-hundred-and-nineteenth unit, uh, apartment building. You can get the old Ferretti Motors property on Philmon Avenue.
Oh.
So, if you have questions about that, you can reach out to me tomorrow.
Oh, another day. Their, their plans, but how high is the high-rise I'm describing?
That building is not a high-rise, it's four stories.
Okay, so, often it's in gossip, in my experience. The story goes down the line of eight people, and it's quite difficult to keep it under the line.
Of course.
Well, I was, the next question is gonna be, how does it differ? From the viewpoint of, you may need high-rise ladder trucks or whatever.
We addressed that component already, we were good to go.
It's uh. But recently, it would, uh, drive my, I was, what the plans are for the Tenere Greenhouses. Right, it was a year behind me, and your system was like two years ahead of me.
Or knowledge that had been purchased by one person. One.
Rooms and whatever greenhouse.
Five years.
Someone bought it, and it's one building.
That's the expectation, that could change, but that is the expectation.
Oh, I almost, I almost got killed over the decades on Turwood Road quite often. Must have had to go, I noticed at one spot where a Volkswagen, I must have missed it by millimeters. Was passing on a blind spot, and that road is closed. Whoever thought of that, I'd like to publicly congratulate them. I almost got killed there, two vehicles coming towards me, I'm heading west to my job at Old Trump. It's gonna be somehow cleared.
That's great, potholes, we reported all from the Penda, we should be good to go.
Penda or whatever, are you, are you reported?
They, they have been reported.
I, oh.
Anything else?
Eight months ago, officer, what was his name, John McGuire, maybe he's sergeant now. I think it was in ten days, a pothole really close to here was fixed. And I think the township workers did it.
If it's on a local road, you can get to it immediately, if it's a state road, they have.
Uneven pipe, it's uh, and then the state will pay the township something.
What else do you have?
I'd like to thank everyone for the noble work, and this is special township all my life here, and because of you folks, the noble efforts, it's even more special.
Great to see each other.
Thank you so much, Mr. Riley, I'm sure you're coming. Got some smiles, smiles today, there are lots of. Oh, is, is it the police chief, may I ask? Having met the previous one, we had a long chat two years ago.
He's much smaller than me.
He's much smaller than me. Wow.
Never stopped here to spend.
Scott Smith, I can't forget that name, eight years at Scott Paper, the job I had. Scott Smith. Any other public comment at the time?
I, I, I don't have to, it's just to set the update, Chris, I want to thank you for sending the letters out. But um, I do have some updates, the month of May, and June first, there will be round the clock work, May third, fourth.
Those are posted on our website.
Are they posted on the web, okay, yeah, and Mark the Jewer grabbed a bunch of your cards. And he gave them to the neighbors, and he said, don't call him, call you guys, if there's any complaints with the noise back there. Cause that's in that P, I'm lying.
We're gonna put that for beta minute.
Any other public comment on Zoom, Leah?
Nope.